Welcome, everyone. First thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for the 2024 tax levy. I move to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 24 tax levy.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. The next agenda item is the public hearing to receive comments on the 2024 tax levy. Anyone who wishes to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. Dr. Weisman, are you going to give us a brief summary?
Yep, I'm going to hand it over to Chris for that.
So, the resolution authorizing the aggregate tax levy for the year 2024 is the first step in the annual levy process. We have a timeline as to what we have to put in place before the board can approve the resolution. Back in November, you saw the estimated aggregate, and tonight is the final resolution. Back in the fall, when we began gathering data for the levy, we needed to consider the current and long-term financial condition of the district. The successful 2022 referendum stabilized and created new healthy fund balances across all funds. Over the last two years, the district has been able to add back staff and programs to support students, and the five-year projections show consistent, strong fund balances even with using working cash funds to build the O'Plane locker room. Seventy-five percent of our revenue comes from real estate taxes. Some of the considerations that we need to take into account when we're calculating the tax levy is CPI, which for 2024 tax year is 3.4%. Equalized assessed valuation increased by 9.9% after exemptions and appeals. And this year, I used an estimate of 4.4 million in new construction. The 2024 tax levy request is 4.98%. We will not get 4.98%. We will get less than that, but we will get at least 3.4%. We ask for more, so we don't leave any anything on the table, but we will get less than what our request is. Let's see. The total estimated annual increase to the portion of the tax bill due Warren Township High School for $400,000 market value home, the increase will be around $128. So, I'm going to back this up. So, there is a change from the information that you got back in November. The IMRF and social security funds, what was levied in the estimated back in November, we moved the those two funds, the amounts that were in those two funds, to the transportation fund to avoid any tax objections because both the IMRF and social security funds are they're on the higher end of fund balance. So, I'm not levying anything in those two funds this year. We'll be spending that down, the fund balance that's in there.
Do you transfer it if you wanted to?
You cannot transfer out of IMRF social security. You can transfer out of other funds, but not those.
Okay.
And this is a new law that we have to present to the board. This is a three-year average of expenses over fund balances. And as you can see, our fund balance is about 57% of what our expenses are for the year. So, we're in good shape for that.
Standard for that, or a criteria, or a goal, or whatever?
Usually, fund balances, boards can decide what they want their fund balance to be, and
It gets past a certain point?
Well, some districts go way over what the board policy is, and some go way under. So, the ideal is for the board to set what they would like the fund balance to be, and try, you know, like administration tries to stay consistent with that.
Okay, I'll ask it another way. Is there a norm? Is there a goal? Is there a minimum?
Forty percent. And I mean, it could be up to, I've seen 75%. So, yeah.
Your board policy says that it should not dip below 40%. That's what you've got in your board policy?
For many years.
And that's all I have for the information.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chris.
Ms. Love, have we received any written testimony or questions regarding the levy?
I've not received any.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to present oral testimony about the levy? Not all persons desiring to be heard have been given the opportunity to present written or oral testimony with respect to the 2024 tax levy. This 2024 tax levy has been placed on tonight's agenda, the December 17th, 2024 regular school board meeting, as an action item. If we can get a motion to adjourn? Just go ahead. I adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Now, we move on to the open session. As we start every open session, if we could stand recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is an approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
So, I would like to take the the school calendar out of the consent agenda. Because I want to discuss a full week at Thanksgiving again.
Me too.
And every year, forever, in perpetuity.
And ever and ever.
For a long time.
Anything else?
Just a question. Would removing the discussion about the next year calendar also remove discussion of possibility of the win days that were implemented recently?
What they're trying to do is remove it from like a block of things we were just going to vote yes on or no on. So, they're pulling it out so that we can discuss it. Otherwise, we wouldn't discuss those items. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But it doesn't stop us from talking about the win.
Okay, yes.
Anything else? If not, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks very much. Next up, we have some recognitions.
Yeah, we just have one exciting recognition. We didn't bring them all in. There's over 100 of them, but we have over 100 students that were recognized as Illinois State Scholars. This year, we're really proud of them for that work. It's having that many students is very commendable. I think it's something that the school board should be proud of, the community should be proud of.
How many did you say?
It's over 100, maybe 115, how?
Hundred and some odd, just about like over.
Yeah, 115 or something like that, yeah.
Is that up?
I don't remember. It's a full page. I don't remember.
But is it more than previous or not?
I don't remember specifically, yeah. So, we appreciate them and their representation of the high school, and wish them the best of luck for success in colleges, sets them up to for some hopefully financial support and way of scholarship moving forward. And that's what we've got for recognition tonight.
That's fantastic. I'm just going to.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Next up on the agenda is our time for public comment. Nobody has signed up, but this does not prevent anybody from addressing the board. If we'd like to address the board, please come up to the podium, and you're allowed three minutes. Here that anybody wants to address the board again, so we'll just move right on to committed reports.
We don't have anything to add, but are open to questions if the board has questions or discussion.
Not appear, so we'll go right into the superintendent's report.
All right, I do have, let's see, four things I wanted to bring up. One of them was the cattle or the calendar, though, so I will wait for that one. So, we did put at everybody's in front of you, one of the things we put was the career guide. So, I think maybe board members have seen a digital version of this, but we have printed versions of these that we are using as part of course selection this year and as part of the eighth grade to ninth grade welcome nights. Over time, we're hoping this continues to be a stronger tool. This first year, I think it has helping build awareness probably internally more than externally. The idea here is that if I'm a student, and I'm not trying to decide my whole future, but if I know maybe I'm interested in marketing and entrepreneurship, this gives me a little bit more perspective around not only what courses I should be thinking about, but if I want to get into marketing entrepreneurship, what is it? What types of careers are involved? Maybe I'm interested in working right out of high school. What types of jobs are available to me, and what does the salary look like? And how many jobs are going to be available in Lake County in the next 10 years? If I'm looking for an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree, how does that change my decisions? And what type of opportunities are available to me, short term and long term? But then ultimately, it helps students decide what types of classes they might want to consider or what types of clubs or activities they could consider. So, this is a tool. I think it's, I hope it'll continue to be a stronger tool as we move forward, but just trying to build some more awareness for families and something tangible that families can use to have conversations with their kids. So, I appreciate all the work. There's a lot of lead teachers that put work into this, and Chris Geo Karas and his team put a lot of work into that as well.
A little bit of feedback at eighth grade orientation.
Course selection night.
Course selection night. I couldn't get it out. Thank you. Susan and I had this on our table pretty much as a prop and couldn't keep it on the table because people kept grabbing it. So, they were very excited to see this, and it was really nice to have that night, too. So, I thought it was a big win. Thank you for everybody putting it together.
Yeah, and I have a suggestion for eighth grade course selection night.
Sure, yeah.
Most of the people that we talked to thought they were signing up for classes. So, course selection may be a little bit of a misnomer. Maybe it's a course exploration or something. I don't know, but they said, where do I sign up for my classes? Like, half the people I talked to asked me that question.
Back.
So.
Maybe just.
It didn't hurt anything because we answered. It said, no, you can just go around and talk to people about different classes, so it was fine. It was a reason to talk to them, which was good, but.
Yeah, no, that's really good feedback.
But some people, some of them had very specific ideas. Some of the eighth grade students, one guy, I want to know about cooking. I'm interested in cooking, or I'm interested in this. I go, well, that's your junior year, friend. Hang on.
Carrying it more towards what the what the experience will be with us.
Cool. That's great feedback.
And also, I was volunteering at eighth grade night, and another question that came up often was about health over the summer. And I was curious on whether or not we had a stall for that or not, because I think a lot of people were curious on how they could sign up or how they could do it. So, that might be something to consider.
Say, health?
Health over the summer, yeah.
Understood. Yes.
Just to add on to that, general course information on certain classes aren't very available. Like, my sister is currently going to ninth grade, so she attended the eighth grade night. And with courses that take place zero period at Almond that all O'Plane students can take, like Jazz Lab is the one I'm referring to specifically, there's not a lot of information about those. And without, you know, me having already gone to the school for a few years, my sister would not have known that it doesn't actually take up a slot on her O'Plane schedule and that she didn't have to choose between two of her interests. And yeah, so I think just some general more readily available information about how Almond scheduling works for O'Plane students would also be helpful.
Yeah. Great feedback. Couple more items. I, when we went over the report card here as a group one or two meetings ago, I suggested that I come back with some answers to some questions at the committee of the whole meeting in January. One thing that I want to throw out as a possibility, we're not going to be done and have grades in for. We're realizing now, well, my team's reminding me, we won't have grades in by the time that committee of the whole happens. And so, if it's okay, it might be more productive to, because one of the things we probably should talk about is the impact of the new intervention courses. It might be more appropriate to have that discussion at the second meeting in January. There are a handful of topics that we could definitely talk, we should talk about at the committee of the whole. So, I'm proposing, if it's okay, that we move the extended report card discussion to that second meeting in January. Then we'll have semester data. Is that okay?
Yep.
Yep.
And then I did want to just comment in my report, I mentioned that I ran or I had about eight students that helped facilitate and ransom facilitation facilitated focus groups with students around equity and what we could be doing to provide a more equitable environment. We're doing that to supplement the focus groups that the audit is doing. One thing that I thought was really interesting that came up in those meetings was that I wasn't expecting was the importance that students place on having time with the adults in the building to build relationships. And when I am asking, so I followed up on that, and I'm like, it came up in every single focus group that they liked. One of the things that they really liked about win time, and maybe we'll get some different feedback. I don't know what kind of feedback we'll get on win time, but they liked that there was time set aside for a teacher to sit down next to them without the time constraints and the push of, we've got to get through curriculum. Talk to me. I like it when a teacher sits down, talks to me about what's what I'm struggling with or what I need more support with, and can give me some of that attention. And when they were reflecting as students amongst themselves with their peers around what would make Warren feel more inviting and more like a place that they belong, that was something that they consistently brought. It was probably the most consistent thing that they brought up.
Called advisory?
It, I mean, advisory would be another spot where that could, that type of thing could happen.
Seems very descriptive of a well-done advisory program.
Yeah.
It was something that.
That's a great point, Tony.
No, I said it half joking, but it's, it's a connection point that sounds like students would appreciate and maybe even appreciate more frequently, so.
Yeah, and it sounds like maybe our students are going to bring it up when we talk about calendar. But I did want to bring that up in terms of the focus group. That was something I wanted to share. And my last thing is we do have a couple of new student representatives. This year, the students are kind of picking what works on their calendar. So, at any point in the year, we might have new student reps, so I'm going to just give them a couple of seconds to introduce themselves. And then when they're done, that's all I have unless people have questions on any of the other submitted reports.
Well, I'm Tristan. I'm a junior. I work outside of school. I do club volleyball, and I'm in mostly honors and AP. I'm excited to be here tonight.
Hi, I'm Monzana, and I'm a junior at Warren as well, and outside of school, I work, and I spend a lot of time with my family. I'm very excited to be here and help out.
Are you guys self-selected, or you'd run for election, or how do you get?
It was mostly a self-signup process, and we just kind of submitted our applications. I don't know what the review process looked like, but we got an email about two weeks afterwards.
Awesome.
I do. They, so I put out, yeah, I put out an application. It asks for students that are interested in doing this, running the focus groups that I just mentioned. We also have students this year that are assisting us with some of our social media push behind the scenes. And there might be one or two other things, but I just called them my superintendent representatives, and there's four or five things that they can do. They decide or let me know on the signup which ones they're interested for. And these are the two lucky ones that get to spend the evenings with us a couple of times this year.
Appreciate your time. We're very glad you joined us tonight.
That's all I have unless there are other questions on the submitted reports.
Questions? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as amended, which includes personal recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 51 through 55, as posted, payment of the bills dated December 17th, 2024, the amount of $5,731,035, regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of November 19th, 2024, and acknowledgement and acceptance of gifts to the district as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Real quickly, in the gifts to the district, I contacted the astronomy club because I had an old telescope I wanted to give them. He didn't want it. He had like three of them like that. But he told me he pays out of his personal funds to get the kids down to the astronomy club or to the planetarium at Triton College. I gave him a hundred bucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up are discussion items. The first one is a partnership report with the Warren Township High School Alumni Association.
When are we going to talk about the school calendar?
An action, probably.
Under action items number F, letter F?
Want to make sure.
I got arrowed.
Someone's excited.
I would never skip you, John.
Okay.
No, you're last.
Could do now, if you want to do it now.
No.
I already have a pencil in down here. I can't change it. It's in pencil.
All right, we've got Joel. Can you come up and?
Who's this guy?
Joel.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me a few minutes to speak tonight. My name is Joel Zwiefl-Hofford. I'm the president of the Warren Township High School Foundation. The WTHS Foundation was created in 2000 to support initiatives that enhance and enrich educational opportunities for Warren Township High School students. It is a community nonprofit governed by a 12-member board of directors, designed to solicit and distribute funds for student programs that cannot be covered by the district's operating budget. While there are sports and club-specific booster clubs, in short, we are the booster club for the high school. The foundation maintains the WTHS Hall of Fame to recognize graduates who have superior achievement or recognition in their individual fields and have brought honor to the Warren Township High School. Initiated by the 1982-83 Student Council, there are currently 29 recipients of the WTHS Hall of Fame. A permanent plaque for each individual is displayed in the main lobby here at the Almond campus to serve as inspiration for the current students. The foundation serves as the official alumni association for the high school. We have focused efforts on building our alumni base through Facebook, participating in gurney days and the WTHS homecoming parades, helping class reunions reach fellow graduates, selling alumni gear. And for the past two years, we have hosted an alumni event in the South End Zone during the homecoming football game. We also have an alumni list of just under 1,000 alumni emails. For the past 24 years, the foundation has had a variety of fundraising activities, ranging from business luncheons with guest speakers, the Blue Devil 5K, and breakfast with Santa. The foundation partnered with the high school to support and host many activities to celebrate the 100th anniversary culminating in the Centennial Gala. The foundation was instrumental in raising over $48,000 during the foundation, or during the centennial. The foundation sells the Centennial book, Warren Township High School, celebrating 100 years of excellence. We also sell personalized bricks as part of our memory wall. And this book can be yours for the low price of $1,999, the perfect gift for any Warren alumni. See Gene if you're interested. From 20, from 2002 to 2010, the foundation awarded $59,000 in classroom grants for projects that enhance classroom instruction or piloted a new project. Beginning in 2008, the foundation began awarding scholarships to graduating students. Currently, the foundation has two named scholarships, the Doc May Honors Scholarship and Memorial Scholarship for our foundation founder and first president Jeff Spivey, who passed away in 2017. I would like to conclude with two 2025 projects that we are excited about. The foundation is about to launch a new funding initiative to secure local business support and provide more stable, long-term funding for the foundation. The Founder's Circle and Legend's Circle will provide two distinct levels of recognition for local businesses who support the foundation. Legend's Circle requires a $1,000 donation with 500 allocated to scholarships, $250 to classroom projects, and $250 to be used at the discretion of the foundation. Donors will have their business name acknowledged in all foundation communications in our scholarship materials enlisted in classroom projects. Donors who contribute $2,500 or more, we entered into the Founder's Circle. The enhanced benefits include the ability to name a $1,000 scholarship and the business name and logo on a $1,000 classroom project. Like the foundation did during the centennial, where business sponsors were displayed on football stadium, O'Plane Road, and pool banners, we would like to have a space on each campus to display our Legends and Founder's Circle members to acknowledge their financial commitment to the high school. We want to take a more active role in awarding scholarships. Through our business sponsorships, we anticipate awarding up to $15,000 in scholarships in 2026. We've also begun discussions with Danny for the foundation to oversee scholarships that the district traditionally manages today. Second, the foundation is looking for 12 to 16 prominent WTHS alumni, local business owners, and community leaders to advise the foundation. The purpose of this Board of Advisors is to provide insights on how the foundation is positioned in the community, how the foundation can increase its presence, and trends the foundation should be aware of in the community. The Board of Advisors will meet twice a year, once in the spring, to nominate candidates for the WTHS Hall of Fame, and in early fall for a business dinner to hear updates related to the foundation and the high school. If you know of any good candidates, please let us know. In conclusion, we are embarking on an aggressive but achievable vision for the foundation. We look forward to building strong, long-lasting relationships with our alumni, local businesses, and high school staff. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your work.
So, I don't know if anybody has any questions for Joel, but his topic will kind of go into our discussion items around parent organization booster clubs and fundraising. But while he's here, before he gets out of the hot seat, I don't know if anybody has any questions for him. I appreciate him. Definitely, it's good for the community that we've got some reinvigoration of that organization. So, I appreciate you, Joel.
Great. I appreciate it.
One thing that I think is good for us to discuss, and I'm going to kind of set some context here and just would like then would be interested in some board conversation so I can hear and understand your perspective as we move forward. There are multiple, I would say, fundraising arms that are connected to the school district. We have kind of the general booster club, booster organization which supports generally athletics and some clubs and activities. Then there are a couple specific booster groups. I know, for example, football has a boost, its own booster group. I think baseball has its own booster group.
dugout club.
Yeah, so there's a handful of these. And then the. And then we have the foundation. We just heard from Joel, and they all play a pretty important role, um, for our students and some of the service that we provide students. I, there is an opportunity right now to make sure that we're working in a coordinated method. Uh, we've got new leadership at the foundation. We've got new leadership, uh, with the booster club. And so I think this is a, a good opportunity. I do think that there's some risks right now, uh, because we have some really excited leadership, uh, and, um, new leadership in the booster club and at the foundation. There's some risk here that I think is good for us to tackle before, uh, things could get, uh, complicated. I think the risks we need to consider are donation fatigue. If there's too many organizations out in the community asking for dollars. I might, as an entity, not, because the foundation and the boost, the different booster clubs may not be coordinated. I might get hit multiple times during the year. And it's probably not always very clear to me why or that these organizations are different, um, and how they're different. I just, what I'm hearing probably as a community member or a business owner is the high school is coming to me and asking me for dollars. I think, um, the fact that there is a referendum could make things, it could be more frustrating to people. I think there's a possibility that when there was so much conversation for many years in the community around the high school having some financial struggles, it made more sense maybe for some people that clubs and teams were coming and asking for dollars. But we then pass a referendum and people feel like they're contributing more. And so, uh, I think there's a risk. I haven't heard this, but I think there is a risk that people might start to get frustrated that you raised my taxes and now you continue to come and ask me for additional dollars to support these groups. And then I think, uh, one of the risks that we have, I referenced earlier, is just lack of clarity. Maybe people in the community not fully understanding what these different groups do, that they kind of represent us and they're kind of an arm, but they are not us. So things that I would consider, or maybe think that the board should consider is, um, asking us as a district to put some effort here in the next few months into coordinating fundraising and advertising messaging, which would mean these different fundraising groups need to get together and put a plan together for the year and, um, come up with some consistent messaging so that, uh, people aren't surprised about different fundraising options that are available. There's four things I'd consider. Two is maybe working with these organizations to put some things on our website that can increase some transparency around what their goals are, their purpose, uh, how they use the funds that are given to them. We might be able to help with that. Let's see, you do have some expectations in board policy for their bylaws and reporting. We give them permission to use our logos and our name, and in turn, they're supposed to give us on a regular basis copies of their bylaws, some financial assurances, um, and we could revisit those. We have a policy meeting coming up in January. It's probably a good idea to revisit those and make sure that those are in fact the things that you'd like them to do. Cause they are, because they have new leadership, they are looking, they are looking at their bylaws right now and, um, asking themselves as entities, should we be rewriting these? And then I do think, because I know there's some specific asks coming down the pike, um, that's probably a good idea to look at your board policy for advertisements. And let's talk through that and make sure that our, that your priorities are, um, are present in that board policy around advertisements. I'm throwing that out and then you guys can talk. Yeah.
So I think that it's important for us to help educate the community on the parent organizations, the organizations, and when they start asking for funds, right, um, the donations. For me, one of the bigger things would be letting the families know that these are funds or donations that offset different programs and projects and things to the school that aren't allocated in our regular budget. So I think that as long as they know that there's a, there's, there's a, there's a separation of how this is used, right? The, the reasoning for getting upset, like, hey, why are you asking me for more money? Well, it's two separate things. These, these are, these, these are funds that are offsetted by these parent organizations to help us because we're not allocating it in our, in our budget.
Is it possible, I don't know how this would look, to put all these organizations under one high school umbrella? So, you know, that way they're all coordinated together and then they have them meet as a group? So that way you can say, okay, you do your fundraising this time. We're gonna do it here. So you don't have like four groups fundraising at Jimmy John's at the same time. Let them talk about and spread it out. You might have more success that way if it's not lumped in together at certain times of the year or certain places.
There is. I've, I've seen that both formally, structurally, where the entities will come under one ta- tax umbrella. It saves them a little bit of money. They can still have separate bank accounts even if they won't. I've seen that. I've also seen informally, they just coordinate better.
I'm just thinking something informally. Put them all together on one legal entity would be way too complicated and I wouldn't wanna do that. But just even if you got them together informally, just so they can talk things out, I think might be useful for everyone.
Yeah, I think that's what he's suggesting. You know, as a parent and as a volunteer at the concession stand for years here at the football games, um, this topic has been a mystery to me, uh, as a community member and as someone that, you know, helped with the referendum. It was hard for me and still is to see where the lines are drawn, where the dotted lines are. Are some of these entities, i- i- it appears when I get like fifty emails a week from different students in different activities, um, using a fundraising platform, um, it's hard for me to understand where the money goes. And I'm not questioning in a way of, of nifairity. Like I'm, I'm saying like, I don't understand who owns the money, who decides what's happening with it. Is Warren Township involved in that, which from what I've understood, they're not. And so, like Danny said, like, there's a lot of, it's almost like the entities are representing Warren. And I don't think community members know that they're not Warren, that they're a non-for-profit that are fundraising on behalf of Warren's students. And so I think this topic is, um, very important. It's something I've discussed with, with people around me several times. And I have concerns that, I mean, w- we've seen it in our community. I mean, there've been, you know, news clips of even local organizations that have had money mishandled. And so when we have organizations that are tied to us as an entity and as a board and, and they're representing kind of a, a Warren-esque movement for students, I get concerned, like what, how it appears, what's going on, what the transparency is, what is the money used for? Cause we, I don't see it after it goes out of my pocket when I donate or whatever, but, and I'm not saying it's used poorly, but to Natalia's point, to, to Danny's point, to every, like, we have very, very supportive community members, even during the referendum, that get hit up probably forty times a week, you know? And so, uh, I never understood even if the, if the clubs and organizations are raising money, is that, does that go into a Warren bank account until I got on the board? Like, where does it go? Like, yeah, to an activity fund, right? But it's theirs. And so, but then the, the boosters is not. We get a, I believe, a certain amount at every time we do a concession. And I don't wanna like go into the weeds, but it's taken me a while to figure out and kind of understand the logistics of it because I always thought boosters was us. And so I think there's, there's great benefits to what's happening. I think there's great benefits to being able to provide equipment and, and extras that might benefit the kids. But there's also, I don't wanna say liability, but there's this, there's this dotted line that is very smoky, you know? It's hard to understand for a lot of people when they're being asked for money. And to another point, I have heard concretely and seen that people are upset that they get asked for money once we've passed a referendum that, you know, was supposed to make us whole. And so I think there is a lot of misunderstanding that this stuff is not, you know, normal, everyday stuff, but may go to a, you know, a quote-unquote "activity capital" project or something, you know? So I think this is really important for us to dive into. I would love to hear from the different organizations that like, quote-unquote, partner with our entity. I'd like to hear what they do with the money. I'd like to almost get kind of reports from them probably, just hear how that, how that process is being, what the oversight on the process is and how, you know, we're all tied together. And if I look around the school, I see a lot of things like banners and whatever. And Joel just asked for a place and this, and how do we decide who gets a place? And, you know, where it's placed and, and things like that. So I think, yeah, as, as life gets more complicated, um, it's long overdue. We really kind of start teasing this out and kind of formalize this process. So thank you for bringing it up. I'm very appreciative of it.
So from my, from what I know, sorry, go ahead. So from, from what I know, like athletics, for example, when we have the kids emailing us, um, from SNAP, right? It's called SNAP. A lot of times these are items that they're fundraising for because it's not in the bu- it's not in the athletic budget. So for example, um, football could be raising money for helmets. Helmets are really expensive. Maybe the district only has half of the amount budgeted, but now they're gonna fundraise to see, you know, to, to capture more. Or like track, I know, two years ago was fundraising for the girls' new, uh, singlets. And these aren't things that aren't budgeted in, in, in athletics. I don't know, I don't know if like maybe it's a good idea to have different areas, like say Amy come in and explain to us, okay, the, the certain sports fundraised for these reasons or specifically for items that they're looking to have. I know years ago, the girls' basketball team fundraiser, like their fundraiser was specifically to, to purchase a dunking machine that only the boys' team had and wouldn't share with the girls. So.
Yeah, and, and, and you're talking right now specifically about our athletic clubs within the house.
Right.
I think even more importantly, the, the kind of tangential fundraising that goes on. The boosters outside of the actual athletic.
Band boosters.
Band boosters, football, baseball.
The different organizations can come educate the community and educate us on, hey, like, we're fundraising for these reasons. We're fundraising for these items.
Yeah, if we're, um, I think I would like to see included in this, maybe in the, you know, if our website's gonna say something to describe what's going on when specifics athletic teams are raising money, which looks the same outside, but is actually something different.
There are inherent discrepancies here and, um, I'll get specific. My, uh, my daughter was very much involved with the, uh, the group that put on the dinner for the kids, the hi- the football team before they played a game. They have to raise money for that.
Yeah.
I got hit up by my grandson with varsity for a hundred dollars. Why? To buy helmets. There is no way we should be sending fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids out to raise money to buy a helmet. No way. I'm, I'm just, I, I have a big problem with that and, and the discrepancy is people are more likely to kick in for football or basketball than lacrosse or soccer or whatever. There's a discrepancy there, the band boosters. We passed a referendum. I would be very interested in knowing how much total they raise, who raises what, where it goes, what the supervision is, and is it necessary?
I don't know about the necessary, but I, I agree with Stephen.
Necessary unless you're gonna adjust the budget.
That, that's my question.
Or if you want something.
We haven't adjusted the budget.
Well, why, why are football, football players paying for their equipment for Pete's sake?
Well, okay, so we could, we could, we could.
They're fundraising.
As are all the teams for their uniforms and stuff.
You know, they might want an upgraded something. We don't know, but.
One of the toughest things to do, and I speak from years of experience, is asking people money for political reasons. I hated it. To ask a fifteen-year-old kid to do that is beyond me.
It happens every, it doesn't just happen here. It happens everywhere.
But it doesn't happen in all schools either. There's a lot of schools that budget in for their, for, for, like what he said. They're not having their kids fundraising. They just allocate it into their budget and that's what they're doing. Warren doesn't do that and many others don't. So maybe it's something that we can look at and see, hey, can we shift some funds to make sure that certain things are, are covered?
We need to be careful. What we need to hear is what they're doing and not make assumptions. If they're fundraising for things that are wants and not needs, that's a difference, right? We can talk about helmets. Maybe it was a special painted helmet. I don't know. Like I, I'm just.
All I'm saying is, you're getting into the weeds and stuff that you don't understand.
I don't.
So if you wanna know what's going on, you can have somebody come in and talk about it.
Agree.
But I'm get, this, this is not an nefarious program where people are trying to
Correct.
get money from people to do dishonest stuff.
No, no.
Nobody said that, but to, but to put pressure on a kid, okay, John, to put pressure on a kid to raise money, I, I just, I have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, we're gonna agree to disagree.
So anyway, but, but the money that comes into these teams, when the teams raise money, goes into an account at the school. So that money is spent on that team because it's in a fund.
Well, what I was trying, well, yeah, but what I was trying to.
Chris, is that correct?
Come on up, Chris.
Yes. Okay, but what we, but what doesn't get in a fund, I think, is like the boosters.
Right.
Right, and that's the one we were talking about. Yeah, that's what we were, that's what I was trying to delineate.
This devolved into the team fundraising, which is a separate issue in my opinion.
Yeah.
So that's, we can talk about that. And if you wanna know what the boosters are doing, all you gotta do is come in here and say, what are you doing?
It's a separate issue, but it's all, we have lots of different kinds of fundraising for sports. So in terms of the community understanding what's going on, I think we need to explain it.
Understood. You can't take away a team's ability to fundraise without giving them more money.
Well, the other part of it though is the way it devolved is part of the confusion, I think. I think it illustrates like some of the difficulty in understanding what's out there, what's being done, who's doing it, you know what I mean?
Are they raising five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars or what? Who are you talking about? The whole group? Who's raising what?
Which group? The teams or the, or the boosters?
Clearly we do need some more information.
Doesn't matter. The team is fundraising what they need.
Did you have something you wanted to add? Yeah, I think a lot of, um, the frustration here comes from a lack of transparency and a lack of, um, consolidated knowledge. And I think having some manner of consolidating that and some easy way to access it, like we do have a Warren website and I feel as if most parents and/or community members, that would be their first instinct to go. I know that would be my first instinct as to where to find this information. So having, um, maybe a plan for the next several years to, um, be more transparent with the umbrella organizations and see where funds are being allocated and where funds are coming from and exactly what they're being used for, including in our own budget. Because there is, um, different subjects as to where money is going, but even more specifically within those certain boundaries. Like, just for example, not to, you know, zoom in on the sports again, but if we're thinking athletics, like, you know, the athletics budget is this much and this much is being used on upgrading fields and this much is being used on like, um, equipment and this much is being used on, you know, et cetera. But just having a plan to consolidate and be more transparent with the information, not only of, um, the original budget, but also of, um, outside money and outside organizations fundraising. And putting that in an easily accessible place, I think would cure a lot of frustration that community members may be feeling.
Well said, Tristan. Thank you.
What I'm hearing is that if, um, we maybe spend some time at the policy meeting in January doing three and four, reviewing expectations around bylaws, reporting and board policy around advertisements, that would allow me to reach out to the groups, coordinate a time to meet with them, make sure they understand the policy. Also see if there's a willingness on their end to coordinate. And maybe they're willing to do that, uh, right before board meeting on Tuesday night and then we can have them come in, uh, and do some reporting out as a first step here in the next few months.
That'd be helpful.
Great.
Okay, also, uh, the, the third discussion item for tonight, uh, is really just an update that the, um, seed all here that we have a handful of students, um, through which, uh, they receive special education services. They've had some unforeseen or unreported, um, financial needs that weren't budgeted for. And then on top of that, they, it seems, were using pandemic relief funds to cover normal operating costs, uh, for a handful of years. So now that those dollars are, are gone.
So now that those dollars are, are gone and some of the unbudgeted needs have come to surface, they have quite a funding gap. I'll ask Tony to jump in here after I give my explanation, since he's our rep on their board. So they have told us that they're expecting a fifteen to seventeen percent increase in tuition for next year, which will be a chunk for us and probably supports one of the messages of the audit, which was to put together three-year plan to try to start bringing some students to receive services here in-house again. So this is some awareness building, just so the board knows that that's coming down the pike in the budget for next year.
Wild meeting. Danny may have to be a little more eloquent when he speaks, whereas I maybe can be a little more critical. During the open meeting, so nothing, you know, is being divulged, but they've had some administrative turmoil there and a lack of fiscal responsibility in terms of reporting that have, has caused a lot of frustration by, I think, everybody that works there and then those of us that are members of it. So, um, just regular audits not being done, Moody's removing their rating, a very under-budgeted year by millions. It, it's, and then combine that with everything Danny said, as far as they will tell you there's structural issues with how they collect tuition and then had used pandemic funds, which if you plan correctly, you know they're not going to be there forever. So there should have been discussions years ago of what we do when, or what they do when those funds run out. Anyway, it led to a very frustrated member, governing board members frustration at that meeting. And there's two interim superintendents that have been there for the last year trying to clean things up. And they will likely stay on for another year just to give stability to that administration and school district and fixing some of these things. Lot of turmoil there. That worries me. I think it worried a lot of us that we're sending kids there. Our most, you know, cross-section of kids that need stability support and, and they're just, I'm not even sure how they're functioning, quite frankly. And then you combine that with an increase, projected increase in tuition of fifteen to seventeen percent. Combine that with previous discussions that our board here has had about the special ed audit and our movement toward bringing certain programs back. I think there's a conversation there of, is this the tipping point where we need to potentially accelerate some of that movement? Some. Our costs are going to increase and I don't feel great about, at this point, where we're sending, until they can provide some stability. I mean, you, how, yeah, it's just, it's, and I'm kind of being nice about the examples I'm giving, but when you, when you purchase a building, you might want to record that somewhere in the books. One example. So, I...
Just a thought.
Just a thought. So, I, I think CEDOL can only go up from here. I think their staff have a lot to repair as far as their reputation and them feeling good about the programming that they provide kids as an organization. I think there's a little bit of trust now broken of, from us member districts that have been sending kids there, that we need to feel good about where we're sending and making sure we're getting value for that increased fifteen to seventeen percent. It just, I know there was, I know you can only go up from here, but I left very frustrated by what I heard. So, um...
And on top of that, we've talked about their staffing issues, right, in the past? And I can't imagine this is really helping the cause.
They went through a massive, yeah, they're going through a process right now to try to address all issues. And then one of those areas is HR and staffing. So they have made some headways, they filled some positions. It's going in a positive direction. But again, if, you know, fifteen to seventeen percent is just the beginning, they, what's next? Like, I mean, as they fix things, uncover things, you know, maybe a forensic audit is in their future, maybe other things will be discovered. I don't know. But I just know when we send kids as an organization to that, you know, our local neighboring consolidated, you know, special education district, of Lake County, you know, it's, you know, definitely left a mark. So they got a lot to repair. That's what I learned at the last meeting. Normally, the meetings are pretty just business. The governing board meetings, they only happen four times a year. I go to them on our behalf. Usually, there's nothing major there, just normal stuff. And there's this executive board that handles the monthly meetings and does the things that like we would do. So the governing board is just kind of, you show up and, and they're, but there's no way that any of us would have known. They didn't even know, like, everything that was happening. So, I guess, number one, in a public forum, this board needed to be informed of what was happening. Two, we need to be, as a recommendation, cautious of our placement of kids at a place that, until they kind of stabilize. And then three, we need to look forward to the future of their increases plus our audit plus our programming and look at, direct our administration, Danny and his team to, what are, now knowing all this, are there implications for that plan? So those are my takeaways. Do any of my peers have any questions or our students? Yeah.
They're right here.
They are right here.
Do we have a disproportionate percentage of them because of proximity or is it spread out?
Great question. I don't have that answer of how many kids get served there. I don't know if Dr. Keely would. I mean, we always have that thought of like, yeah, I don't really know. I know like...
What I'm saying is, if we pulled out, would they go under? To be blunt, candid about it.
Well, there have been over the years, there have been one or two districts that have pulled out. It's not the whole, like, off the top of my head, and I may be, I don't want to misspeak, but in, I don't know how long it's been, but I, I want to say Hawth, not Hawthorne, Lincolnshire, Stevenson, a couple others, decided to pull out and create their own little consortium. I think, I don't know how many it's up to, but it used to be four, yeah. So there, there are individual districts that are weighing and have been historically, not recently, but have been weighing, is the benefit there? Are we seeing the value? What if we just partnered with a neighboring district and created our own? Like, that's a conversation to be had. And I don't know the history with Warren, if that's ever happened or not. Yeah, I kind of like, I mean, as a community member, if we have kids going there, it's nice that our kids aren't sitting on a bus for an hour to get appropriate programming. I like that they're in the neighborhood. For us, there's value in that, I think. Then again, they're friends in the classes or probably from other neighborhoods, but it, you know, at least they're not sitting on a bus for a long time.
We have a slightly higher, higher level or higher tuition spending on outplacement services when you look at other high schools and other school districts. They're not necessarily all at CEDOL. I don't know if we're proportionately similar at CEDOL. We have, over the last couple of years, been placing students more often in places other than CEDOL. So, CEDOL has maybe ha, about half of our students that receive outplace services. That's a really quick number out of the pocket, but, um, so we do have slightly higher outplacement rates, but I don't know how that actually hits CEDOL.
It'll be interesting as we, um, very targetedly and methodically bring kids who can come back into our buildings, you know, then see who's left at a CEDOL. Because I believe, my understanding is it's harder and harder to fill a slot there and then prices are going up. And this is supposed to be the benefit to Lake County school districts, so...
How many, how many students in CEDOL? What's their whole population?
I don't have that answer.
We have about thirty students right now.
What's the total?
I don't know.
Okay. I mean, if it's two hundred, that's one thing. If it's a thousand, it's something else, you know?
Yeah, and it's not just, you know, here. They have a couple other buildings in the county as well where they run programming out of depending on the needs of the kids. So, like they purchased Fair Haven from Diamond Lake recently. That's the one that didn't get recorded on the books. I think there's a couple other, at least one other that I know of, building elsewhere. So they run a lot of programming that we, you know, when you pool kids together, it's, it's, you get, you're meeting their needs a little better as opposed to, if we have one or two kids that only have a certain disability, it's, might be a little hard to program for. So the concept's good. If they're running, the, the issue is, there's a lot to clean up there.
One of the things you kind of threw out there in your summary, and thank you for bringing it here, was our looking internally and asking ourselves, you know, is, is there a possibility of accelerating? Or what would that look like? Is that something, you know, we here need to talk about? Is that something, Danny, you need to talk about amongst, amongst the buildings? And kind of round up and see, you know, what the thoughts are there based on the information, based on the concerns? I mean, should we start talking about accelerating anything? Is, is it possible? I really don't. It's a question.
That's like an internal discussion for them to even, if, you know, if I were like on Danny's team, for instance, I would probably want to look at who we place at CEDOL, what their disability is, whether or not, how many are in each group, whether or not we can find people to teach, licensed teachers to teach. We're getting space, that's every year that goes by with the reduction in our enrollment. But, you know, that's where I would start probably looking. I might even, if I were Danny and on Danny's team, even maybe talk to a neighbor. And if a Grace Lake or Mundaline or someone has three more kids as we find, you know, there's an alignment and maybe there's, maybe it's not a formal, you know, program.
Agreement, yeah.
Well, there would be, need to be an agreement, but it wouldn't be...
Just an agreement, right.
I don't know. I, I think maybe there, but you would need to look at an individual student level, I think. And please, Danny, I'm, uh, feel free to correct anything I'm saying.
Danny, what are your thoughts? I mean...
Yeah, we have started talking just in the last three weeks since we got the news about what would it look like if we accelerated that timeline? The students that we would most likely accelerate, bringing back into the district are students that don't, aren't medically fragile, because at that point, we're just looking for space and personnel. And so then, we've been doing the financial analysis that you're seeing some of that and started talking through, are there, what are the cost savings? Would there be cost savings? What are the program benefits of bringing that back in-house? Do we have enough students that we think we could do that with? Most likely, we would initially target juniors and seniors. That would probably, as they, as students mature, the students that we could bring back that don't have medical fragile concerns, probably maturity will help them transition back. The unknown sometimes is families, because families get a seat at the IEP table. And so, um, it's not necessarily that we're always just sitting down with the family and telling them where the placement is. We're bringing them into the conversation, talking with them about placement options. So there are still some unknown, there will probably always be some unknowns the first time we try to bring a program back. I have sat down and started talking formally with our feeder elementary school districts to talk about just shared services, because some of the shared services for special education are like occupational therapists, physical therapists that don't need to be grade-specific. And, um, we've talked about also connecting with Mundaline and Grace Lake. We haven't done that yet, though. Mundaline does, I think the reason we talked about maybe the schools that aren't in the co-op anymore recently is because Mundaline put a notice in maybe four or five months ago. And so you saw that maybe in a, in an update that Mundaline was saying, hey, we might pull out here. So there are some opportunities there to coordinate that we started formally discussing and our special ed directors reaching out to the other special ed directors to talk to them. I don't know if it's going to be, I don't know if it's going to be more, um, if there's going to be more pros or, or then cons to expediting that, but we are talking about that.
Just curious if there's any difference in urgency or...
So, just a question. It seems like this conversation is about fixing a current problem. Just wondering if there's been any talk about preventing this problem from occurring in the future, at least as extensively as it seems. We've been talking about fixing this current problem?
The, the initial parts of the conversation that we've had about prevention are those conversations that I've had with the elementary school superintendents. And when a student in an elementary school or a middle school starts getting involved with an outplace program, when that program's successful for them, that family sees benefit in that and they appreciate that programming. And, um, the easiest way to have students receive services at Warren is to continue to keep them receiving services from their home or serving school in elementary, middle school. And so one of the initial hurdles we talked about with the superintendent, other superintendents, is that occupational therapy, physical therapy, sometimes those related services are tough to do and tough to staff here. So we're talking collectively around, is there a way that we can address that here in the community?
Um, is it difficult financially or is it difficult as in finding people with the correct qualifications or both?
It's difficult to find people with the correct qualifications that we can afford. It's a limited market and they, they can set their salary right now.
Like assurances of a job, like OT, PET, special education in general. There's just been this ongoing shortage. So, speech pathology, a lot of those services around helping people with needs, shortage. So what's happening is they're all getting picked up instead of coming directly to us, going to like a consulting company. And then they're getting paid a much higher rate. Yeah. So I, these are people that are commanding and getting a very decent salary. Yeah, I mean, think about your future.
It depends on how much work there is, too. Like, having a full-time employee to only do two hours if one student or two students need it. A lot of shifts occur. And so, like, my husband runs, you know, a therapy group. And, you know, it just really depends on what your clients need at the time. And each year it changes or it might change throughout the years. So if you have a full-time employee and they don't have enough to do or all of a sudden they have more than they can handle, it's really hard to, it's hard to manage that sometimes, so...
Questions? Now, we're on to action items. First action item is we're looking for some new advisory positions for the LINK crew.
Yeah, LINK crew, Ms. Bertola introduced LINK crew a couple months ago. This is a freshman support program. The LINK crew advisory positions are kind of like a student, think of it like a student council advisor. They're helping coordinate different support activities for the ninth-grade students. We're hoping to get that approved early so that we can post the position. They can step into that position here second semester to start doing training and planning for next year's incoming ninth-grade class.
Questions?
Well, not necessarily a question, but rather a comment. I feel like that's actually pretty good because I remember, like, in my freshman year, I was super nervous. I feel like the idea of having a LINK, like a person who can comfort you. And additionally, I mean, like, of course, we have counselors around here, but they also have a lot of other students to manage. So I feel like that's a really good thing to do, to balance out everything with the new incoming freshmen and especially with everything that's been going on lately, like, in general, like with the middle schools and stuff and how attitudes have changed over time. I feel like it's a good idea to bring that in.
It's good to hear.
Yeah, I'm really glad this is happening.
I move to approve two LINK crew advisory positions as personal recommendations per Exhibit B, number B-14, as posted.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Next up, we're looking for approval of the summer school program.
See, I think we're going to ask Nate Karasek to come up and just give us a brief overview. It's mostly rinse and repeat, but some changes.
Good evening. I was hoping that you would have an opportunity to take a look at the inter-office memo that I sent to you regarding the changes and updates to the summer school program. If you have any questions, I would love to answer them for you.
So is this regarding geometry over the summer and health or...
Uh, well, yeah, that'll be part of the programming, yes.
We're going to have health.
Health, yeah.
Could you tell us a little bit about tuition assistance for people who really need it?
Uh well, we have the fee waiver process that students can, that if they have fee waivers, that that applies to them for summer school as well.
So the the last time I think we were talking about summer school, we talked about the um online, you know, assisted summer school remediation versus and I think if I read through it right, it's the EL remediation classes that are now teacher-directed.
Correct.
Those are the changes that occurred.
That's part of the changes, yeah, but then there's also the the criteria that we had for if we have a teacher available and um we have enough students in the classes that we can offer the classes for remedial, in-person, teacher-directed.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for taking that step. Appreciate it.
Has there been any conversation about having no tuition or free tuition for remedial classes?
There has been discussion about that. Um if the board wants to discuss that, that's that's, you may do that.
Well, you said there has been some discussion. I'd like to hear what you guys have discussed first.
We we just, we talked about um the difference between um a regular uh course and remediation course, like a advancement course or remediation. Um and there were some pros and cons to both of those i- ideas. Um there was, I believe when we were talking about this, um trying to determine if there would be enough way to fund it because summer school's always been a self-funded um nonburden for the school. So if you look at the number of students who are taking summer school for remediation, it's about half of the students who take summer school over the uh for advancement.
So you said it's supposed to be a nonburden for the school and and under whose direction is that? Is that something we've said or?
That's just been the history of it. I've been told that it needed to be.
Zero balance, yeah.
Yeah, we've always tried to work at a zero balance.
And from there, you're also paying the teacher salaries that are, you know, for the teachers that are teaching that summer.
Two pieces. One, I did not set him up with that uh question. At the end of.
You're pointing at me like I'm really not that smart to think of that.
I had asked, I had asked the exact same question. I actually additional, because in my mind, you're paying for it one way or the other, either on the front end or on the back end.
Yeah.
The, but the, I asked, and maybe you could respond to this on the spot. Um I did ask, I wanted to know how common is it in Lake County high schools or high schools around us to charge for remedial because it's uh for the outlier, that changes the conversation a little bit. Do you recall what that?
Uh what Chris Gillcarrested is he um sent out a survey to our CADCA members, which are all the members um that are part of the curriculum organization. And if I remember correctly from the the responses that they had, almost all of them were charging for summer school and most of them, I think, unless it was grant-funded or or had some other caveats to it, um were also charging for remediation.
And we haven't practiced this at all, but my, my, my question, and I know there's not an answer to it, but if it was free or greatly reduced, maybe we'd get a higher enrollment in those areas. And yes, it may not be zero cost-based and might cost us some money, but it just seems like that could help some of our other issues that cost us money down the road. Let's get more kids up front in these remedial classes. Get them more education, get them a further push that might help them down the road.
Um I I think that our s- our, I don't know if you're going to increase the number of students who are gonna take summer school for remediation if it's free. We've had, for the last three years, we've had that and looking at the numbers, if I could remember correctly, there wasn't a whole lot of difference between the number of students who are taking it currently, when it was free for remediation as opposed to when it was um a tuition-based. And and we're talking about uh the last time we charged for summer school, I think it was two hundred and twenty-five dollars per class. And now there's a a significant reduction to that amount. So hopefully that'll have a benefit to it as well. And I I can, I can verify this. Our counselors are working really, really, really hard um at the end of the semester of the second semester with all the students who um are in need for additional uh courses that they need to take in order to get back on track. Um so that being said, like they're always, they're keeping in communication and they're enrolling students, talking to parents. Um and they do a fantastic job of of trying to get as many students as possible to take the courses.
And there's still a fee um waiver for anyone in need that can't pay for it, right? So it's not as if someone that can't afford it won't be able to.
That's correct.
Right. Yeah, but on the other hand, you know what? I'm just thinking if there was no fee, that's one less hurdle to get a couple more kids in. And you still have to prove something to get the free tuition, if you will?
Well, they already proved it with the previous year's waiver.
But there's still a certain group of families that haven't gone that route because they choose not to, that could still benefit from this.
If I could jump in, yeah, there are, I know um most of the school districts that we talked to were charging. There are school districts, I don't know what the ratio is, but there are school districts that have a reduced fee for remedial courses. Or uh if there were school districts that had uh no fees, those were specifically for remedial courses. So while a lot of the schools are charging like we do, the no fee, uh there is precedent out there for no fees for the remedial courses specifically.
How many, how many are remediation? Could you remind me uh estimate? How many kids are enrolled summer, like one course?
I, I, oh, in in one course?
Yeah.
I I don't know the answer to that, but I could tell you.
I'm just trying to get an idea in my head, sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I I um, you, are you talking about historically?
Yes, mm-hmm.
It it varies because it, because everybody uh that we have, there are, it's not like students are failing one specific course en masse. We do probably have, there's certain classes that students are are failing.
Can I ask it in a different way maybe then? How many kids are needing re- remediation in the summer?
Nate, I've got your numbers from last year in front. Can I, can I pull off of that?
Thank you.
Um so last year, we had about three hundred students that were doing remediation, about four hundred and fifty that that did advancement. The remediation is primarily um algebra one, algebra two and geometry, an English one or two class, a social studies class or a science class, and maybe PE. So it's the four or five, four areas uh generally. And the the highest class really is English. So we got about a hundred and fifty students that took English last year, about a hundred that took math and then um.
But until now, and and maybe it's a total zero budget, but until now, if I'm not mistaken, we haven't um, we've used online coursework for them, right? And I know there's a cost to that and I know that there is a adult, and it, I don't know what what the title would be in the classroom, right?
Yeah, I think we call them, I think it's like a remediation coordinator or something like that. I can't remember what the exact title is.
So I understand there's costs associated with that, but it's still, you know, so I was just wondering if, does that help with that or is it a zero-sum summer school kind of a to where we're offsetting costs elsewhere?
I I'm not sure I understand the question.
Thing is, is the remediation class less expensive even though you're charging the same thing? So part of the re- remediation class money is offsetting the four advancement classes.
Probably the other way around.
It's the other way around.
The other way around?
It's the other way around. In fact, when when we looked at the initial budget of this and trying to come up with a number based on the history of what we've charged in the past, it was the way the other way around.
That's helpful to hear, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure I am, but the optics of this, I'm I'm listening to this and my understanding is that we have not been charging for summer school over the past several years?
Yeah, because it was, it was paid for by Escher funds.
And now we passed a referendum and we're gonna charge.
Well, no, the Escher funds are done.
Two separate things.
I understand that, but not in the minds of Joe, the common person.
Two, two separate things, but the conclusion is correct.
Yeah.
If I could jump in here.
I don't like the optics of that, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, if I could jump in here, if there's any question from the school board around, should we or should we not charge tuition, I would recommend that you maybe take a small bite out of the remediation courses and just say, hey, let's see what it looks like and what ends up happening if we do either no cost or some type of deposit. I know for like our ACT classes, we do a deposit and then if you meet the attendance criteria, you can get those dollars back. They still got some skin in the game. Uh it's a low-cost deposit, but something to get rid of some of those hurdles.
Yeah.
Uh and see that and and see if there's a a response to reference to the president's talking, see if there's a reaction, an increase.
I kinda like the, oh, second.
Nate, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I am. You said you guys had discussed it and you saw some pluses and some minuses. So what's your opinion on it?
So I'm gonna jump in here. I think generally what we've talked about as a team is that um the 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 risks of this probably is you're gonna, you're gonna run into as an organization some um questions around morale from staff. So staff will probably feel like, hey, we've put everything on the line. We've been trying really hard. We've got new interventions. Uh students have been coming to lunch. I've been bending over backwards to try to help a student pass and um some, they'll feel like charging provides some accountability for families and students. And they will probably feel like taking that away. Um some of them may feel like if we take away the costs and it's um it means that we are, there's less value that we're attributing to the work that they put into trying to get the student to pass during the semester. They'll get, they might be offended by it.
Versus looking at it like we're trying to help the student pass and succeed.
Yeah, yes.
No sense to me.
Yeah, staff will.
It's optional to take it in the summer, right?
It is optional, yeah. They could take it in the fall for no cost, which is why I'd consider for remedial ca- class considering no cost because the student could decide to do it at no cost in the fall if they wanted to. Having them do it over the summer is probably better for everybody, but the s- some staff, not everybody, but some staff will feel like this is a little bit of a slap in the face.
But it's not a personal, I I mean, I guess I'm I'm going back to my, literally hearing my father, is, take the personal emotional out of it. It's what's best to your point, like what's best to the kid, like I understand there's maybe attendance issues like with the SAT, if you were to say, put down a deposit or whatever, and if they, if they show up for the whole thing, here you go, win-win. You know, you don't have to pay and uh you got, you got your coursework done, you know, and you were there. At least you were showing effort. I mean, maybe that would speak to some of the concern the teachers have if there were that type of an incentivized route.
The thing that really is tough for the staff is sometimes you'll get a student towards the end of a semester who um they're frustrated because they, it's been a tough class for them and the teacher might still be reaching out and trying to support them. And sometimes you'll get a student that's like, you know what, I'm done. I'll just make this up during summer school. And when a student says, I'm done, I'll just make this up during summer school, it's really hard for a teacher who's been putting the energy into that to hear that. And they, they'll feel like anything that, some staff may feel like anything that we do to support the summer school option and make that a more viable option doesn't recognize the work that they're trying to do during the semester.
I I can see that perspective, but I also think that on the other hand, we're giving the students another opportunity to succeed.
I also think um as a student, it would still, it would still deter students from just purposefully failing a class during a first or second semester just so they can take remedial if we had a deposit because to the student's eyes, that still looks like, oh, that's money out of either my bank account or my parents' bank account. But um the idea of returning the deposit once they've um completed all the classes above a certain percentage of attendance also requires them to be a little more accountable um and incre- I'd say definitely increases attendance, which I don't know if it is an issue, but I would assume is relatively an issue in remedial classes.
We definitely need them to attend over the summer. That's a big, that's a big priority.
So, yeah, I do think, I do think the uh deposit would increase the accountability and definitely increase the attendance just because um, you know, your parents will definitely get very mad at you if they have to pay that deposit and not get it back.
Yeah, and going off of that, like I feel like if they know that there's a deposit to the summer school, they might even try harder in their classes to make sure that they're not failing because like he just said, like parents will be upset. They'll be upset of the fact that they have to pay about for it. So it's kind of like a motivation or like a push to not do that. I feel like right now, like since we don't charge for summer school, a lot of students tend to like rely back on it. And they're like, okay, well, if I fail this class, whatever, I'm just gonna make it up over the summer. But if they know that there's a cost to it, they might try harder to avoid it.
Dr. Weisman, based on these conversations, what do you think we should do with this motion?
Yeah, so then I would probably amend my recommendation to approve the summer school program two thousand twenty-five uh with uh fees for remediation classes modified to include a deposit. Uh and we can figure out the details of that, um but that would be the new as presented then. We'd probably just mirror the ACT deposit process and amount then.
So I still wanna hear your thoughts.
Well, I I um, I think that the the deposit's a good idea, quite honestly. Um the years that I've done summer school and with fee waivers and with the being free the last several years, the numbers that you see with or that Dr. Weisman was um sharing with people who actually showed up are considerably, are less than the number of people that enroll.
Participation went down.
Well, uh because, because the counselors are working so hard to get students in, we're and either there's miscommunication with parent, there's just a a bunch of reasons why this could potentially happen. But we usually have at the first day of summer school, a pretty significant number of students who are enrolled. And based on um just attendance, there's a good number of students who who don't show up. And that's been more, I would believe, in the last few years because it's been free. Um that is, I have seen that also with the fee waivers where uh students have fee waivers and then they don't, they don't show because for whatever reason that might be. And and it may have nothing to do with the fact that they have a fee waiver. It's, it it may have something to do with their home, I mean, there's, there's just, yeah, they could be working, there could be any other, um a whole bunch of different reasons why they don't show up. So I'm not, there's no blame being put on them. It's just an observation that I've had um over time that I've seen there's an attrition of pe- of students based on attendance for the summer.
And I think the um the deposit, um it's it's an extrinsic motivator for sure because at least as a student, what's more motivating to me than just getting good grades is my parents being mad at me for not having good grades. And especially with attendance. So uh and knowing a lot of the ki- I'm I'm very close friends with a lot of the kids who have to take these remedial classes. And at least from what I've seen, it often stems from a lack of intrinsic motivation for um like desire to really care about grades. And I'm I'm definitely not meaning to imply that applies to all or even a majority, but I do think adding an extrinsic motivator there, an external motivator would increase um accountability and for sure increase attendance. Because if the kid doesn't want to show up, then they won't. But if the kid's parent is going to get mad at them for not showing up, that's at least much more of a push than just the kid's own desire to show up to remedial classes in the summer.
So I I do have a question for the board because I would like to get some direction on this. Um if we're going to go move forward with the um the, what we're talking about right now, are we still going to be doing the fee waiver process? That would be a yes, right? Okay.
Yeah, we're just amending it to include a deposit. Yep. Everybody okay if I amend the, okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I move to approve the summer school program for two thousand twenty-five as amended to include fees with a deposit for the remedial classes.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
And Nate and Chris, I appreciate your extra time out there. I'm sure that presentation took a little bit longer than you were originally expecting, but I appreciated it very much. Next up is we're looking for an approval for some more roof bidding.
So we don't have anything to add here, but we'll definitely answer questions if you have any questions about the roof bid process.
It's roof, I'm telling you. That's a comment.
I've got no questions.
We're on phase three and this is a four-phase.
We're on phase three and this is a four-phase situation.
Thanks for being here, Chuck.
Chuck.
Okay, if there's no questions, I have to clean my glasses. I moved to approve the Oak Plain Campus roofing bid phase three and award Olson Roofing Company the base bid work with ultimate for B and C in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti? Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, for sitting all through all this just in case we had questions. You're a polite liar. I appreciate that too. Next, we have the resolution authorizing the final aggregate tax levy. Any other questions on this? I didn't think so. I moved to approve the resolution authorizing final aggregate tax levy for the year two thousand twenty-four, which includes the certificate of tax levy and separate resolutions for special education and SEDOL IMRF by the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District one twenty-one, Lake County, State of Illinois.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Martinez. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next up is Mr. Keely's gonna talk about the safety committee or not.
Well, yeah, we can. Mr. Keely can answer any questions that you have about the revised safety plan, but the safety plan was reviewed in the safety committee sent out to the safety committee and then discussed and reviewed today in the safety committee meeting. So we had some questions that came up in closed session that are appropriate to talk about in closed session. But if there are any questions that are more appropriate for an open conversation or discussion, those would be good to talk about here before you approve that.
Insert my comment here. This is all great stuff, all stuff that I mean, we're moving definitely in the right direction and I feel great about my kids attending school at Warren with all these things in place. That all being said, there's different types of safety out there. There's physical safety. So the physical school, that's mainly what this is. And then there's emotional safety. Whether that's just having an adult that you trust that you can turn and talk to or lessons on social emotional learning or it could be a variety of different things, or it could be monitoring social media, attending to some of the stuff that's happening on there that spills over into the schools. So I just don't want to. There's no you know, action other than just maintaining a close full close eye in district through existing student services, staff, social workers, whoever is on those teams and just making sure the proper time and attention and supports are in place for emotional safety, just as much as we have attended to physical safety. So I just want to recognize that the complete picture of safety includes all those things.
Is there any interest? Because we have, I appreciate those comments. We have traditionally focused that safety committee discussion and the topics of that committee on the physical hardening of the building. Is there any interest in us looking at that topics differently for that committee?
I would also include like, you know, I think even talking about we we have a safety website section, right? And there are different topics that are explored. And even just making sure that we're including those things in the conversation. Parent education, student education, active efforts to educate on different aspects of what Tony's talking about as far as social emotional safety, but also safety prevention in the homes, safety prevention, you know, with the kids. So yeah, I think we could broaden it. I mean, we I think he's right. We've done a lot of hard work in the last several years, especially trying to fortify the school and it feels good. But nothing feels always great these days. But yeah, I think broadening the conversation was a good idea and I think we could take a look at different aspects to at least touch upon and make sure that we feel confident that we're addressing a little bit more than just hardening the building.
And for clarification, I those conversations very well are probably happening.
Right.
It's just that they're not existing outside the day at a committee that we can attend. So
Correct.
there might be just as much feedback potentially. This is why it might be good every now and again to have one that focuses on that is as community members, board members and parents, we may have seen and heard pieces of these things that would be appropriate to provide feedback at an official committee. So that really is the difference.
I don't want to miss an opportunity here and I'm watching you two make eye contact and you know. I want to put you on the spot. Do you guys feel safe here? If so, why? Do you not? If so, why?
Um, I feel like the teachers here, honestly, I have built such a good connection with them that over here I do feel safe. To talk about the way that I feel. And honestly, I've been able to be vulnerable with almost all my teachers this year and I mean, freshman year, it was a little bit harder because I think at that time I was very anxious. So like going on with like welcoming the freshmen in a better way, I feel like is a good idea. But honestly, overall, I feel pretty safe because of the security of my teachers. But I mean, students, but teachers for sure. Yeah. What about teachers then?
Can you can you say that in a different way? When you said teachers, yes, students, eh?
Well, I mean, sometimes like, you know, honestly, all of us are just trying to get through the school year and sometimes you might come across people that aren't exactly the kindest out there. And so that's why like sometimes when it comes to students, it might be more difficult to rather get along with people or I don't know, feel like there isn't competition or just like there can be a negative environment in some areas like it just depends on your interaction with the person, I guess. But like I said, all of us are kind of just trying to make it through and sometimes there can be like that rough patchiness between others around you. I mean, most of the time I haven't had to deal with a lot of rough things, but you know, it can happen time to time. So yeah.
When you say rough, is it a discomfort amongst peers or is it an unsafe feeling? Like, can you help define that for me a little bit?
For me, it's a discomfort mainly, but I mean, for some people it can vary. It just depends on their attitude towards the person like I mean, we know that violence kind of has been growing to.
Feel unsafe with other students.
Wait, what?
You can you feel unsafe with other students at some at times?
Well, not me personally, but other people. Yes, I've heard. Like it can be, it just depends, like I said, on the person and I guess circumstances. But yeah, that's what I'd say if I had to describe how I felt at school.
I've never really felt a sense of danger. I've always felt pretty safe, at least from physical danger, you know, being in a social environment, there's gonna be social discomfort and social I can't quite find the word, tension, social tension. There's always gonna be that disagreements between people and I've I've realized that. So I don't I don't feel like I've felt any sort of unsafeness or any sort of sense of danger while being at Warren.
Else? If not, I moved to approve the amended school emergency and crisis response plan as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Carlson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next up, we're looking for an approval and a discussion on the twenty-five, twenty-six public school calendar.
Yeah, so every year about this time, I like to bring up the option of having a full week of vacation at Thanksgiving. We're down to two days as it is. We've already eliminated Wednesday because it was a total waste of time. So now Tuesday is a total waste of time.
And Monday.
But I think that and I know some of the, I think Woodland has already done it.
Fifty-six.
Oh, correct. Yeah.
So I think that, you know, it's time for us to really take, you know, a more, I don't think we've ever really been real serious about it and I don't know how the staff feels about it. I don't know how anybody feels about it, but I think it's something that in the universities do it too, by the way. So most of the kids are home all week. So I think we should really take a a close look at it. It's two days. I mean, we can we can pick up two days, even if we pick up one the second semester.
Yeah, we did. I appreciate that. We did look at we this year we had a staff group that met with me to look at calendar options. That's where the idea of maybe acknowledging some different religious holidays came up. And so we're gonna incorporate some partial days to acknowledge some different religious holidays. So we put together a calendar with that group that included a full week for Thanksgiving off to mirror the elementary schools. And the scenario we ran into is right now, if you look at our first and second semesters, they're already off balance. So there's less days first semester already than there are second semester and taking two more of those days off during the first semester and putting them into the second semester. Or so you most likely what you do is you'd put them into second semester because people don't want to start earlier in the school year. They don't want to start that first full week of August.
So extend it by two.
So you could extend the school year by two and but then your calendar becomes your semester become even more unbalanced. And now just in the last couple of years now, we've got next year it isn't an issue, but the year after that, it would be every other year. We have an election day that pulls another day off of first semester. So we end up with a second semester that's
We have a Friday off now, right? Or a Monday or Friday in the first semester in October?
They have like two or two or three.
We could for like holidays.
Yeah, there's an institute day and a couple of holidays.
Yeah, yeah. So the the only way we could get it to work is if we unless the semester became so unbalanced that we're looking at like a whole unit of study is if we pushed finals to second semester. Which works for some people just fine, but when we talked to the staff about it, that was really uncomfortable.
Well, we were doing finals after winter break and then we went back a couple of years ago to before break.
Yeah, so.
So we would be going backwards doing that.
Yep.
How unbalanced is it? How unbalanced would it be?
I don't remember exactly how many days it is.
Can you guys look at it?
Yes, we did look at it. I wouldn't. I mean, I wouldn't suggest that you get into like seven. I think it's seven days off balance that you have in semesters.
Problem. Yeah, I mean, this may be obvious, but a year-long class is fine, but a semester-long class is not. And that is where the issue lies.
Uh, is the the discomfort about moving finals less than the discomfort about starting early? Is that are the like, it sounds like those would be the two more, I don't know, reticent options for?
I think the concern about the moving finals is there's just a concern that if students are gone for two weeks and you come back and you give them a final, they're not gonna recall a lot of that information. And
Yeah, I agree. I guess I was saying versus starting early, like what's the starting early concern?
I think the starting early is more like families just aren't expecting to start that early. The elementary schools start later than us and so starting even earlier than elementary schools would really shrink the summer up for families.
Okay, I'd like to watch these two. There's a strong opinion over here.
As a student, moving finals after winter break, I think would be the worst case scenario. Having to think about fi- I already like this year, I will not be here for finals. So in the next three days. So I already have to experience that and it's very stressful. Having to think about it every year during winter break would be terrible. I would much rather start earlier. And I I acknowledge that it would make a shorter summer. But I'd much rather have like a few days shorter summer than yeah, it's not. It's not that much.
Summer's not gonna be that much shorter. You're gonna take the days at the beginning or at the end of the school year.
And I mean, also the days lost are also made up during Thanksgiving break when we get the full week, hopefully. And additionally, like okay, this might be a really big reach, but like I know.
She's asking for December off.
No, 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 no. I'm saying. So I was saying like, I know for seniors right now, finals is optional. I was thinking that maybe like if we're having this big of an issue like attendance and basing it off what your grades are, maybe again, we could consider that for juniors and sophomores and freshmen, maybe. It just depends. I know that that might be like a harder decision to make because it's a huge one, but I feel like if we're if we're having this much issues with final, that could also be a consideration or just doing like second semester finals. I'm not sure, but yeah, that's what I was thinking, like based off attendance and grades.
I appreciate that it would be nice to have a week at Thanksgiving, but I don't really understand John why it's why it's so passionate that you bring it up every year?
Because I like it. Everybody likes it.
If Woodland and Gurnee grade are doing it and you a lot of families have
I think that's a big reason too, though. I would say that that's a big, it it makes a discrepancy within a family sometimes. You have one kid doing one thing.
We can't go because you have to go to school, you know.
Right.
I would agree with that part.
They still go, they just pull our students.
Right.
So they're still losing instruction. But it's a discrepancy because elementary school districts have different issues in their schedule setup.
Yeah, they have trimesters, so they're not worried about balancing things around the Christmas holiday.
Trimesters it is.
Annual finals, I heard.
Study that.
Three finals.
I'm just kidding about the trimester.
There you go.
See how this works?
So Mr. Anderson, share. There are many staff that share that same perspective and there were people at that calendar committee that said, can we try to make this work? We did have a draft of that that we gave to the union to look at. And yeah, so we've we've looked into that.
Woodland and and Gurnee have never had that before, if I heard correctly.
Say that in a different way for me.
Apologies. Yeah, is this the first? Is next year gonna be the first year that they'll have the whole week off, Woodland and Gurnee fifty-six?
I think this year, I think they might have it this year as the first year. It is newer, but they do. They did have it this year, I believe. I don't know if it's, I I don't know, and maybe parents or students know better. I don't know if it's that there are parent-teacher conferences on one or two of those days and the students just aren't in attendance. That may be part of it. That's what some elementary school districts do is students aren't in attendance, but they use those as their parent-teacher days, meetings.
From Hawaii. Okay, I I don't wanna I don't wanna miss. You guys have brought up Wynn. It's the students, all right? It's not about me. You guys have brought up Wynn and we would want to discuss it around the calendar. So I don't want to like adjourn without you guys being able to bring that up.
So I think Wynn, just the few experimental days we had this semester were very helpful, not just for me, but I think for students in general because I know me and Anzal know we used our Wynn time in different ways. I use mine as PE makeups just because of issues with shirt getting stolen or days where I just forgot it at home. And I think that's one of the only reasons I'm able to keep an A in that class. And honestly, it's just, it's a very nice break to have halfway through the day. Well, not halfway, but like towards the end of the day and it helped me focus a lot in my AP United States History class right after, much more than I normally am to, just to get out a lot of energy that I you know, store up through just sitting down all day. So I think continuation of Wynn, maybe once or twice a month would be very helpful for students in general.
Yeah, and following up, especially as junior year has been so rough for me. I mean, the Wynn days helped me a lot because I got to spend one one-on-one time with my AP US History teacher. And also Twilight Studies, this goes along. I feel like that's also very great because again, you get that one-on-one time with your teacher that you might need. And I feel like overall, it was just so helpful to be able to reach out. Not all the time, like, you know, it's hard to meet up with your teachers after school or a free period that they have. So Wynn provided everything that a student might need like in the moment. So I I really liked it.
It's super encouraging.
Can you tell us what Twilight?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, Twilight Studies. Um, that's like what they offer after school if you can't stay during study tables and it's from six to nine P M. And you usually have like a a Google Meet with like a teacher that you might need with help with. And as of right now, it's mainly been one-on-one for me because you sign up with your own email and if you want to add friends, you can if you guys have similar questions. But it's just nice because it's it's like a very like I've had because of that, I've like gotten better at taking my physics tests simply because I had enough time to go over with one teacher. And it was just really nice overall. And also like, for example, athletes and stuff, I think that's the main reason why it was made was because after school, sometimes athletes might not be able to get the help that they need. So they go on Twilight Studies and that's where I started doing it when it was during track season. It was honestly very helpful.
It's great to hear.
I appreciate the feedback on Wynn. So we did two pilot or proof of concepts with Wynn. And we did a couple of feedback sessions with staff after we And, uh, we did a couple of feedback sessions with staff. After we went through those, we're meeting with the school improvement team, which is a group of staff and student representatives, um, on the institute day in January to go through that feedback and then put together kind of a s- plan moving forward. So excited to report back on that too. I appreciate that feedback.
Questions on the calendar?
So it's a complete shutdown or we're still conversating?
We're still discussing.
Anything to add is what he's asking.
Why don't you ask John if it's a complete shutdown?
Woodland and District Fifty-Six both use the beginning of Thanksgiving week for parent-teacher conferences. So that's something that they have to have in their calendar anyway. They're not completely.
Well, the kids don't have attendance.
The kids don't go, yes.
The parents go.
Yeah, they're right. It's fine. I can wait.
Till next year.
Talk about it next year.
Can I, can I make a motion for a complete shutdown? Second. No.
Don't make me. Don't make me.
Any other conversation on this? Okay, if not, I move to approve the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six public school calendar as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez? Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Just a matter, John, you could vote.
I almost did.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Hey, gotta have fun.
No. I'm a no.
That away, Paul. Thank you.
I have six yes and one no. Motion carries.
Can we say our vote?
You had your chance.
Yeah, you had your chance.
I'm just being supportive of everyone else.
You could make a motion to reconsider because you're on the prevailing side.
My perspective was, it would be nice to see more alternate solutions.
I don't know about this one.